Everyone, we're gonna start the committee of the whole meeting for October the 8th at 1:00 P. M. We're gonna start with approval of the agenda. Recommendation that the committee of the whole meeting agenda for October 8th, 2025 be approved as circulated. Counsel Evans, Counsel Rich, all in favor? Carried. Adoption of minutes, there are none. Delegations, we're gonna jump right into delegations. Shuswap Water Council Director Martin and Erin. Is Stephen here with you or is he doing? Okay, you guys can take it away.
And I'm not here as Director Martin.
Oh, okay.
I'm here as Rona, as the Chair of the Shuswap Water Council. We do have a PowerPoint and I'm gonna kind of flip through this a lot because you are all familiar with the Shuswap Watershed Council and you do have an active member on the Shuswap Watershed Council. You have two other people sitting at this table right now. Maybe Malcolm, have you ever attended the Shuswap Watershed Council?
I don't think I have.
Okay, so I know Laura has and I know Colleen has both attended Shuswap Watershed Council.
I have.
So, you know, it's some people that are interested in. So, as you know, we were established since 2014. This is the next step from the very painful swat. Was a real joy to be part of. It was a partnership that's based on global governments, First Nations, community members, interested parties. We have two separate committees. We have the, kind of the, well, one is the elected, one is the elected, one is the local governments now and community members. And then we have the professional committee that Robin, why do I always say that? I do that all the time. Erin will tell you about. So Erin is gonna talk about the operations and I'm gonna talk about our partnerships and how we work together to try and protect the water in the Shuswap. So as it says here, we've got provincial agencies, we've got the agricultural community, we've got science and academia, and we've got community representatives. And some of the community representatives and some of the provincial agencies have been partners in our group for quite some time. Why we're doing this is because we need to collaborate. This is a huge area, the Shuswap Watershed is a huge area. It starts over in the Marshall County, Michigan, from the Lomond area. And if everything that we gather all along the peninsula's way, that means huge currents and then we can release a river. So we have a huge expanded area that we're trying to protect and make sure that everybody at the end of the pond, the receiving end is able to use the water and drink the water and share resources from the water like we do up here. We, our organization has been involved in some absolute fantastic projects. We partnered with a science student from the U C O'Grawen. And I can tell you about that when she gives her report. But, you know, there's people that are in communities that are curious as to what we're doing and why we're doing it. And basically, why we're doing it is to protect one of the biggest assets that we have in our community, particularly in this community where it's not just the source of drinking water for the District of Sycamore. It is a source of economic development and has been a source for economic development for decades. Not to mention the recreational opportunities and the healing opportunities that it provides for all of us. So what we've done, we cannot make any decisions, we have no power, but what we can do is we can advocate. And we've done a pretty good job at times of doing that, making a lot of noise, we bring lots of letters, we go and speak to people like we're speaking to you right now. We share any information that we have. We partner with different groups like the Invasive Society to try and make sure that there's testing done in regard to the VSA muscles. And we are trying to work very proactively with our agriculture industry. And Erin will tell you about our grant program and some of the successes that we have had with that. So I'm gonna turn it over to Erin now because she is the one that has all the information. And it's all in her hair and I'm just trying to move around. So Erin, take it over and I'll.
Thank you, Rona. So I'm just gonna take a few minutes and tell you about our program operations. But before I do that, I just wanted to give you a quick overview of what the water quality is in the Shuswap right now. And so, as you probably suspect, it's in pretty good shape. We're very fortunate here to live in a relatively unimpacted watershed, but there are some arising concerns. And there is evidence of some problems that are starting to come up. And this has been noticeable primarily through a couple of large outbursts that happened in 2020 and 2022. The lake's been fairly bloom-free for three years. But these blutes happened three and five years ago in the Salmonar Bay area from about July to September. So that, we know that's caused from the impact of nutrients flowing into the lakes. And they're primarily coming from agricultural land. It's not a problem that is unique to the Shuswap or to B.C. This is a global issue that aquatic different government agencies are dealing with. The other major threat that we have here in the Shuswap is the potential invasion of zebra or quail muscles as well as whirling disease. And from the scan on social media, it seems like Sycamore is very aware of the zebra and quail muscle issue, which is really good awareness is gonna position us well to have prevention working well for us. Also, not unique to the Shuswap is, you know, impacts of climate change creating new challenges for water and exacerbating existing challenges. There's also a rising concern about environmental flow, conservation, water for salmon and so on. Next slide, please. So I'll give you a brief overview of most of these items on the screen. But we are involved in monitoring and research. We have a grant program. We've done some work towards the development strategy. We're working on aquatic invasive species prevention. We report on water quality. We do some work on safety as it relates to water. And of course, our Chair already mentioned our advocacy work. So I just wanted to take a minute and tell you about this research that our Chair referenced a moment ago. We partnered with U C O'Grawen, oh, nine years ago now. So this isn't news, but this is just a reminder. So we had a team of researchers from the university do a very thorough water monitoring project in the watershed. And it was focused on understanding the impacts of phosphorus and nitrogen flowing in from across the watershed into the lakes. And what we did find is that agricultural lands and urban areas and the valley bottoms of the Salmonar River, the Eco Valley and the Shuswap River, those are the areas, very small parts of the watershed, but those are the areas contributing the vast majority of phosphorus into the lakes. And phosphorus is what's triggering these outbreaks. So what we did with that as a non-regulatory group that has no mandate for compliance or enforcement or working with agriculture community and sort of that, that frame, we decided to develop an incentive, which was a grant program. And we provide funding to us that they can implement new sustainable practices and programs on their farms that protect water quality and build up their soil health and kind of create like a win-win for farming. So to date, we've issued 23 grants worth of $271,000. And this is over about five years. There's lots of projects that qualify for funding and there's a short list on the slide there. And these are matching funds. So the farmer who applies has to, they have at least 50% of their project cost covered and we can come in and went up to an additional 50% for that project that is protecting water and building their soil health. Oh, just a few photos. The two photos on the right of this slide are taken at Crystal Lake Ranch in Malibu. And they have received grant funding from us in the past for some of their work that they've done. And we've also provided funding for projects such as fences, riparian improvements, wetlands development, the practices that improve livestock management on farms such as watering as well as nutrient storage. Aquatic invasive species prevention, I probably don't need to talk too much about this, but I do wanna say I've seen the work that the District of Sycamore is doing on this issue and it's, you're doing a great job. Keep it up. I've seen your campaigns for Clean Rain Dry and prompting your tourists to stop the water prep inspection. So those are the key practices. We've been urging people to do that who come to the Shuswap. And we try to run our campaigns province-wise that people from regions of the province will see. And we also are providing funding to the Columbia Shuswap Invasive Species Society. And they're the nonprofit group that does the muscle monitoring to swap. So this is a huge issue. It'll be very costly for the community. Really takes a lot of people to be working on this and encouraging everyone to be compliant with the best practices. So thank you for the work that you're doing on this. We have a safe boating and recreation program. This is just, it's a little bit different than the rest of the work we're doing, but it's just acknowledging that the Shuswap is a big part of tourism. And there's a lot of people coming here to play and we do want them to play safely so that they can come home. So we run some safety campaigns through the summer months. We have a partnership with the Royal Marine Rescue Rescue and they built a bunch of children's life jacket kiosks and we just helped them to promote that and we developed some of the collateral for them. So that's a really quick overview of the work that we've been doing the past several years. Chair Rona did mention that we've been facing some funding shortfalls recently in that as a result of the CSRT not funding us anymore. This year, we do have funding secured from the Thompson Echo Regional District. We have some funding from Adams Lake End. And we received rent and aid funding this year from the CSRT, which is very different and a much smaller amount than the partnership we had with them previously. We're also looking at the provincial watershed refund. We've funded B.C., we're putting a notification into the local sphere. But we would like to request some kind of report from the district going forward as well. So that's just a request that I'll leave a few. And maybe there's a way I can follow this up to figure out what would be the best path for us to proceed with. That's it. We're happy to take any questions. And if you do want to learn even more about what we've just been talking about, our annual report is published on our website. I believe you all would have received it by email as well. You can either contact me or just go.
Thank you, Rona. Thank you, Erin. Appreciate the presentation. As you know, we are going into finance meetings now. So you do have an advocate sitting at this table with Pam Beach, Counselor Beach, bringing those concerns to the finance committee. And you do great work and I've sat on that board and I know how important that work is. And monitors the water, like it is, Rona's, as you said, it is our recreation. It's our drinking water. It's, we need it. We need the lake. We need the lake to be healthy. So, Counsel, Counsel Beach, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanna say thank you so much for the hard work that you have been doing and advocacy that you've been giving. I hope that we can play a part going forward as the District of Sycamore. And I know we've supported in the past. And so I think it's, we're gonna be looking at that seriously. And we rely on a healthy lake. We are, you know, as a rural, small rural community, most of us in the province of B.C. have lakes that we rely on for recreation and tourism. And for Sycamore, we really rely on the lakes. So listen, thank you for all the work you do. Thanks, Rona.
And I'd just also like to thank you for all the work you've done on the promotion of the theme. I think it takes an effort from everybody and anytime that we have the opportunity to bring whatever it is that folks want water into the area, you know, just get that message out there.
Thank you, Counsel Bushough.
Thank you, Rona and Erin. A great presentation. Yeah, budget season's coming, so we'll make note of that. But I was gonna ask, I know like the Fraser Basin is more of a natural river basin. Columbia Basin is more of a revenue generating basin where they have all the dams. Is there any kind of funding that we could, you know, look into with the Columbia Basin? Is there any kind of funds that they might do for neighboring basins or anything like that?
Usually the CBT is, CBT, the CBT area. You know, that's kind of their rules and regulations. There's sometimes that they will partner with things, but not very often. It's usually focused on the impacts of the dams and let's send those to you.
Okay.
And one good thing is any education that they're doing goes beyond watershed boundaries. So if they're doing work on Clean Rain Dry and the prevention of whirling disease, those messages go farther and wider than just a Columbia and we benefit from that. But can we spend their dollars? I don't think so.
And I do a lot of traveling on the road and I noticed for the last little while, there has been no inspection at Golden or in Alberta on the, at the Way skill, old Way skill centers in Alberta. So they've pulled that back.
Yeah, I think that's something that we've all advocated for every, we've been able to meet with some of our MLAs and that point that every, that we have. And, you know, I mean, it's just to get the information from them about who they have stopped and what they have some is so valuable. So if we could get something that's, you know, at every entrance into the province and gather that information from everywhere, then it would be good for all of us. Especially seeing as, you know, it's so close to us now. We all have to be vigilant.
Absolutely. Counsel Beach.
Yeah, I just wanna put it out there that when I attended FCM, I had the honor of doing that this year. The issue of zebra quail muscle was not federally for FCM, was not brought forward at all, which concerned me considering that they're quite infected in eastern Canada and we are trying to prevent it. So I just, I just wanted to bring that up so that we're aware that representation of the FCM doesn't seem to consider the zebra quail muscle as a threat to B.C. enough to bring it up at that conference.
When I was a board member of FCM, I brought it up in the Environmental Committee meeting and tried to get the resolution onto the main floor. And at that time, they didn't consider it national, you know, and which I was very upset about.
Yeah, they still don't.
We did get the opportunity to talk about it. And I guess where it's already done the damage, they kind of are thinking, you know, it's too late. The horse is already out of the barn. And there's, you know, they're finding a way to use some of the shells and things like that, but we don't ever wanna get there. We wanna be able to walk into our water without having our feet cut to shreds. So, you know, that's why we need to be.
Yeah, okay. All right. Yeah, go ahead, Counsel. Yeah, go ahead, quick one. Questions from the gallery will be at the end of the council meeting. So, okay, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, so I mean, I think, I think that's, that's the whole issue is that it didn't come up and I had to bring it up. It didn't come, it wasn't on the FCM agenda at all. And that shocked me actually, but it's good to know, right? The funding is going east. It's not, it's not coming here.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate the presentation. All right. Hey, we're gonna continue on here. We've got a recreation update. Jamie, do you wanna take it away?
Just to touch on one, these ladies just talked about, we were actually just traveling to the Coopies this weekend and we saw a pretty cool sign that says, please check your boat for aquatic hitchhikers. We just thought that was kind of funny. It was just something that, you know, instead of the Clean Rain Dry, it was something that resonated and stuck with us and it actually started a whole conversation in regards to the muscles and that sort of thing. So I just thought, you know, it may be something to look at, another fun way of getting the message out that maybe sticks with people. So anyways, good afternoon, everybody. I'm excited to present you all with our recreation update for the fall of 2025. I'm gonna touch on the things that we did over the summer and what we're working on for future for this fall and coming into the holiday season. So the first slide here that I have today, it's just a little bit of a recap of our summer programs. So I'm gonna just talk a little bit about our summer kids club program and our summer swim lessons. Every year, our summer kids club program changes a little bit. We're always trying to make sure that we're keeping up with the trends, trying to make sure that we are not in competition with our local daycare society that we have up and running, but still offering some options for families that don't need full-time childcare or for those grandparents that have children, grandkids visiting and they just need that break where they can have a day off and then gives a chance for the kids to go and make some new friends sort of things. So each year, we come up with something different. This year, we went back to where you could pre-register, but you didn't have to register for a full week. We were able to buy a 10-day pass and be able to use that 10-day pass throughout the entire summer. We did find that parents did like that flexibility. There was one family that they had two children. Mom only worked on Thursdays, so she just wanted to be able to put them in on Thursdays. They liked our program because we did funny things like go to the beach and baked and we did all those type of things. And that's the thanks to Danielle. The program wouldn't run without what she does. So you see at the bottom here, there is a testimonial and I just have to read this out because I think this just is the essence of what our program is trying to do. And it says, "We have a fantastic curator. She generally seems to love working with kids. She handled difficult kitty motions like a pro and communicated about the challenges in a very professional manner. My boys formed a great relationship with her. They loved how approachable Danielle is. They felt safe with her and they told me that she was up for her to go with her kids." These two young boys that this is referenced from are all the way from Toronto. They come out here, they have a summer residence here. They just turned five. This is the first time they're actually be able to be in our summer camp. And mom is already saying they can't wait to come back next summer and see what camp is gonna be like. So I think these little ones are gonna be with us for the next couple of years. And we've seen that over the 10 years that this program's been up and running as we watch kids start at that age of five and then age out at the age of 12 because the program just doesn't fit their needs anymore. So it is a very important program that we offer in the summertime. The other program that is a must-have for our community, of course, is our Swim for Life program. This year, we changed things up. We looked at starting our program later in the day. Instead of having lessons start at 10:00 in the morning, we put them back to 12:00. Was it successful? Without a doubt, 100% successful. We went from having an average of 60 kids in swim lessons to 103 this year. That is an absolute record for us. A big difference was that we got from the parents as the little ones, we're not cold. 10:00 in the morning, you still get that cold breeze off the lake. The kids come out and they're cold. This time here, because the classes were later in the day when it was warmer, we didn't fight with the kids to keep them in the water. They were willing to be in the water because it was hotter and they wanted to be out there. And of course, this pool wouldn't be as good as it is without Owen. Owen Hilton is an amazing swim instructor. And as you can see, the parents do like the fact that the lake or that the lessons are held at the lake. And he is, as it says here, wonderful. Owen is so wonderful. The kids love him. He has a good control of the class. He handles them well. And this is their third set of swim lessons with Owen as an instructor. So again, comes to say that we have great instructors that are running these programs because parents feel comfortable to sign them up here up to here. If they weren't comfortable with these instructors, they wouldn't be moving these kids back into these programs. So it worked out quite well. And then our relationship and our partnership with the daycare, few little hiccups and hurdles with to do with the, you know, with the bridge and stuff being closed underneath. But for the most part, once we kind of got them all dialed in, they got the lay of the land, how to make sure they got to the ferry end time and then be able to move them backwards to and from the ferry station, I guess, for lack of better words. It worked out quite well and it was so popular that they're actually going to expand next year and we're gonna offer to all age groups offered within the daycare. So our numbers probably will increase even next year. And offering swim lessons for them one day, even on Fridays throughout the full eight weeks, definitely was a bonus. Parents that had their kids in daycare love the fact that their kids could still get this very valuable swim, swim lessons and life skill that they needed to have. So, next slide, please. So the other two drop-in program or summer programs we offered this summer was on the left that you see there, that's Chris with their Wiser Yoga. He has a steady, drive and true class, dedicated staff, or dedicated yogis that come up to his class. And he's very thrilled to now be doing classes in the healthcare center. And it was nice to get the best to his pool right outside in the summertime. So Dave said the weather was bad. We were able to transition them over into medical care center to ensure that classes weren't disrupted. And then on the right, you see that is Tanya or Tonya, sorry. She is our new Kengoo instructor. I know that Carol went to a couple of classes, Camden went to a couple of classes. And this is just a really cool program. As you can see, she's got these funky little boots. They're like old-fashioned moon boots we had as kids. And so you can go out and exercise. It's a cardio workout, but none of the impact is on your joints because it's all absorbed by the shoes themselves. This was so popular that we've actually created a fall program. And the fall program now has about seven or eight people dedicated that come out every Thursday. And then we were able to actually work out a deal with the elementary school that her spouse, he is registered, he is a school helper, that sort of thing. He takes all the parents, the moms go and do the workout and he's entertaining the kids in the other gyms. They're playing floor hockey or they're, they're doing all sorts of little sports. So we actually have a drop-in program now for Kengoo, which is something we've never been able to offer before, which is pretty cool. So, next slide, our Canada Day. So nobody knew what Canada Day was gonna look like this year. One with it being on Tuesday, two with all the bridge construction. Nobody kind of knew what was gonna look like, how the, how the parking was gonna be impacted, everything else. We found that Canada Day was okay, but it wasn't as good as what we've had in the past. So putting our thinking caps on, we'd like to actually take what we had previously at the beach park, knowing now that we've got extra parking, things like that. We're gonna move our Canada Day back to the beach park. But we're gonna take a couple of the key things that was from our family fun day that people miss, like our carp or boat races and our sand council competition. And we are now gonna make Canada Day starting at 3:00 in the afternoon till 10:00 to fireworks. And we're just gonna fill that full day with, oh, pardon me, I'm working on, seeing if I can get the bubble guy to come in to do a bubble show, some bands. We'll put out our yard games. We'll bring out our mini bounce house. We'll have these events plus a few other things that we're working on. And then just make family day or Canada Day. We were packing breakfast, the Arts Council, and it's just a full day of events opposed to trying to put everything in into one small box. Then we don't have to shut the street down for residents and businesses on Main Street and we're just limiting our street closure to one day on that weekend or that week. Next was our Strongman competition. So this was new for us this year. It started off where we didn't think we were gonna have a Strongman competition. I'm very grateful for Daryl and Ben. They can even actually set up sub-pumps and actually drain the parking lot of water for us because the whole area where the events were supposed to be happening was underwater, but we got that all taken care of. And by the end of the day, I'll just let Bianca play the little video and it will kind of show you what it was like. And by the end of the day, I'll just let Bianca play the little video and it will kind of show you what it was like. So this was a great day. As you can see, it ended up being a beautiful day. I think we could just look every season we could imagine that, weather-wise. We were pretty seasoned competitors. As you can see, they were male, female. They ranged from young as 16 to as old as 56 in this event. So we had all sorts of different age ranges and as you can tell, also different strength, weight categories for that. It was one of the best events. The competitors loved the fact that we had a mirror garden. That was a big hit with them. We worked with Brent from Ten Pandas to collect these photos for us. We have use for them for next year. And we've already booked the rec center for next year to have this event actually held in May inside. One day is gonna be a Strongman competition and the second day is going to be a CrossFit competition. So we're gonna be probably in the next two weeks or be working with Cody and Bradine, sorry, your names, baby, to start working on sponsorships for next year's event. And we're hoping to work with the CSRD as well to see if they'll be partner with the event and essentially waive some of the costs for us for the use of rooms. We're hoping to make this a signature event for in our springtime that are gonna film people in our hotel rooms and get them to the restaurants and things. So next, we're gonna talk, well, just briefly, here are some of the fall programs we have up and running. So our new program that we've started this year is called Little Lassies. I'm very happy to say this program, ages 36, is sold out with 10 little ones. It starts tomorrow morning. We're gonna be doing two weeks of golf, two weeks of football, two weeks of basketball, and two weeks of soccer. So every two weeks, Danielle will be taking these little ones through, just learning the fundamental movement skills. And then it gives the parents the opportunity for kids to try new sports without having to fully commit to a full registration fee. I did get a lot of feedback from parents that they're seven and eight-year-olds that also want to do this program. So it'll be something that I look into for the New Year, is having one day to be the 3- to 6-year-olds and one day is to be seven, seven to 10-year-olds. The other youth program that we put together this year is called our Masterpiece in Masses. And that picture that you actually see up there was actually created by Felix Sutherland, or Sutton, sorry, if anybody knows Sue McMorland. It's her granddaughter created those pictures. And it was really cool just watching the artistic ability that they came up with. Danielle spends a lot of time searching Pinterest, I search Pinterest for different things. So that was actually made out of those old-fashioned beads that we wore as kids. You know, you layer the beads and beads, beads, that's paint and you just roll them through the, on the canvas and make all these creative designs. And we have students signed up for that. That starts this afternoon. So we're pretty excited to see what they're gonna create and do. And there was talk, well, next year, doing a little art show with them as well, where they could actually show their little crafts and things like that at one of the dev centers more like spring. So I've already touched on the Kengoo program. We're happy to say that we're offering yoga four days a week at our healthcare center, Wednesdays, or sorry, Mondays and Wednesdays, with Mara from 8:30 to 9:15. We have Rayna doing Thursday nights from 7:00 to 8:15. And then we have Chris Ritter doing our Friday mornings from 9:30 to 10:45. And the numbers, especially at this new healthcare center, are much higher than what we had previously at the Vincent Building. A lot of people expect they don't have to climb stairs and it's a central location and they just oohing and aahing about the facility and how nice and bright and clean it is. We also have our family gym nights, which is on Monday nights. Again, this is a program that's very popular with our homeschool families because this works as their key curriculum that they have to have in order for their homeschools. Samara's back leading our pound fitness class. So if you wanna rock out and beat the floor with some drumsticks, make sure you catch a class with her on Mondays. And on Tuesdays and Thursdays, we have our Kung Fu nights. That's all of our drop-ins as well. So upcoming events, we have our Halloween party. We are partnering once again with the Eco Valley Arts Council. This worked out really well. They do some crafts. We do some crafts. We bring out some games for the kids. We do our famous costume judging. If anybody wants to come and be a judge, please let me know because I don't like having to do it because the kids get mad at me. But we get some pretty amazing costumes, as you can see in the background. And if you are coming, urge everybody else to dress up as well because we work in the spirit of Halloween. Treat bags and goodies have all been ordered and we're looking forward to another full house again this year. And then last but not least is our Christmas parade light up, which everybody knows is my favorite event of the year. I've already sent out save the date and registration forms. I think I already have six confirmed parade entries already. It was just great. We're gonna adjust the parade time again, being cognizant of businesses. We're gonna shut them down till most businesses are closed that day. So we're not gonna actually start the parade this year till 6:00. And we're gonna do a rolling street closure. And so we'll make sure that as once parade is over, the roads will open back up with the, you know, making sure that we got some flaggers set up so that way down at the traffic circle, we're not having any accidents down there. And we've talked about for years that this event has always had something missing. We kind of do the fireworks and that just ends. So kind of talking with a few staff members, what we like to do this year is once the fireworks and stuff are done, I've already contacted aka Mr. and Mrs. Claus. They're willing to do a photo booth with us over at the healthcare center. So kids in that can get pictures with them. And then we're gonna screen a Christmas movie. So we'll probably work with Camden to put a survey out there, have people vote. And then so what, and I use a hot chocolate popper in it and the inflatable movie screen inside the healthcare center. That will be our kickoff to Christmas camping, so. And then that's it. Other than this, I just wanna say, most of these photos of these kids programs have come from Danielle. This is what we call them, the Sycamores Club Bike Game. You know, it wasn't always easy getting over to the beach this year with the transition and everything being closed. But what we did do is we did take advantage of the ferry. And so what you'll see is that thing that's up in the top right-hand corner, that's actually a spot along the rail trail where the kids actually got off their bikes. They had their picnic lunches. Danielle would send a message out to the parents, say tomorrow's bike day because she had a great relationship with Jimmy and the other guys running the ferry to know if the sidewalk was open or closed. And then we adjusted accordingly for our summer kids club program. So I just wanted to put a shout out that, you know, this worked really well, even though we had some hiccups along the way. But by the end of the summer, we were pros and we knew what we were doing. So I'm open to any comments or questions.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Jamie. Appreciate the presentation. Great job. Counsel, Counsel Rich.
Yeah, through the chair. Thank you, Jamie. Holy cow. It's been a busy summer. So I've got a couple of questions for you, so I can do them in breaks or holiday train.
Date has not been released yet. We typically don't hear the date on the holiday train until around the Thanksgiving weekend. And usually they notify the resource center and then the resource center contacts me so that we can make all the arrangements.
But we'll be supporting that again this year. That'll be a Sycamore's event.
It is usually a resource center event. We help them by supplying them with whatever needs that they need. And then usually I hire a Morgan to come and set up the Christmas music for me for the event, so yes.
Go ahead.
Again, through the chair. So next question is, you know, I'm in the schools. The parents are asking for more rec stuff and how we support them. And I know that you're limited, but they're also limited. And I don't know where we find that balance that we keep kids in Sycamore's because I've got so many kids going to events, like not events, they're signing up in Sam and Arm Enderby. They're moving out of our community. We've got so many families moving into town right now. How do we keep those families signed up to our programs? And I know that's just off the cuff and I'm sorry, I didn't text you before that.
No, that's okay. It is a challenge that we've always faced. The biggest challenge for us definitely has always been recreation. We are mercy of the school, so we can only get into the part of the elementary school after 2:30 and we can't get into the high school until after 3:30. And then there's all these groups, you know, trying to buy for that space. I'm always open to parents. I know I've had, like I said, with the little athletes. I had parents come to me and said, "We'd really like to see this for our age group." So it's just a matter of, you know, having the budget, you know, being able to, you know, be able to afford. I try to schedule all my programs where all the costs that I bring in at least cover staff time, rental time, that sort of thing. I try to aim as always to make my programs be cost-neutral as possible. Some of them do that, some of them don't, but that's always my goal. So if parents have questions or they want to hear some things, I mean, if you come in my office, you'll see that I have all sorts of ideas and things. It's just a matter of finding the space, finding the time, and finding the budget to do so.
All right, through the mayor, one more. We used to do the volunteer day at the beach, which wasn't working out. It just became a kind of a tourist hot, free hot dog day. Is it possible that we can get some kind of thing going again without our community? I don't know if it's April, like you guys figure out the month. That we've got so many volunteer groups here that we can do a volunteer reconciliating. Oh, God, say the word.
Reconciliation.
To get, to get, I just want the volunteers to be recognized and...
And that was very apparent last night because I did attend the community connections that we had. There was 14 different groups that were there. I know that we had talked about it last year when we did, when we did make the change that Family Day weekend wasn't working. So, you know, national volunteer is April 18th to 25th this year. It's all stuff that I'm working on, looking at for budget-wise. So if we wanna look at maybe doing a tea or a luncheon or some sort of recognition, that was a council-driven project. So you guys tell me what you would like to see and I'll make it work.
I'm just gonna take one more. Back through the chair. I think it needs to be in the evening because most volunteers have kids and jobs and all those kind of things. So I think it needs to be, and I know that sucks for everybody else, but if we're gonna do something, it needs to be at night because everybody else is just doing their jobs and trying to...
Thank you, Counsel Bushel. Counsel McCabe, then Counsel Bailey.
Yeah, Jamie, great job. Again, lots of good comments from young families. And you're doing, you and Danielle and Owen, your team is doing a great job. Budget season's coming and I know, you know, we see all these communities popping up, like the one over Boys for Toys. There's a lot of new young families over there. And then you take a look at the hemlocks are filling in and the trout is probably starting to slowly pick up again. Budget time, I guess we have to, you know, we have to budget for more rec programs or more staffing. How, what do you see in the next year or two? Like, what do you think we need to keep kids in town?
Um, we just have to be able to offer them affordable, affordable, affordable programming, programming that makes sense. I mean, as I said in the past, our minor hockey program is growing exponentially, which is great, but maybe we should turn focus to that three- to six-year-old age group, which is proven to be working. We need to look at programs that are not just sports-oriented. We need to look at music. We need to look at arts programs. We need to look to see, I just put a big post out yesterday and today, you know, looking for instructors. Is there a Tai Chi instructor? Is there a dance instructor? So are there people who wanna come in and work with us within the district of Sycamore's? Or is there ways that we can expand, you know, with what we have? Like, are there training programs or stuff that we can take in order to offer more programs within the community?
Great, thank you. And then also, when we do have programs, we run them not in our facilities. What are ballpark, like, what's the cost to rent the gym and what's the cost to rent the elementary school?
Well, I'm working on things right now. I think a ballpark figure is about $3,000 a year is what we pay for rental to use the school. And then it depends on the other facilities that we're renting in the springtime. We try to utilize outside. At summer, we try to utilize outside as much as we can so we don't have that extra revenue. But again, it all plays into factor. Like, I'm fortunate that because with the Kengoo, for example, because it is a children's program, I can rent the school for $4.50 for that small activity room. High school, I'm paying $13, but there is also discussion that's happened now with the local school where they are talking about increasing the rental rates. I was fortunate enough that it doesn't look like they're gonna look at raising what we do right off the bat. But if anybody outside of the rec programs that look, they're talking about a triple to quadruple rental rate. So something that normally would've been $13 an hour may go up to $52 an hour. So that, it's a big substantial raise, so it's just something that we need to be cognizant of moving forward.
Thanks, Jamie. Counsel McCabe.
Thanks. Just a comment. Yeah, we have our communities based now in our health center that maybe could have some functions there. But anyhow, I was just curious, on the Strongman, where do you, where do you get your equipment for the Strongman event?
Equipment actually was with Bradine and Cody. So the folks that I partnered with, they run a gym outside of, in Armstrong. But the Strongman community is very tight-knit Strongman community. So we did pay some rental. And what happened is that some came from Caleb, some came from Clonos, some came from Merritt. And then what they did is they just had a man and they just went around and picked it all up and then brought it into the event. So, because otherwise, we wouldn't be able to because I'm not gonna, you've seen some of that stuff. There's like 560, 60 pounds and stuff and I'm not gonna buy those type of weights, so.
Counsel Bailey.
Yeah, thanks, Jamie. I mean, it's coming up the budget. I mean, last year, we kind of, I don't know if we had a really good discussion on recreation budget or anything like that, but it's one of the things that I constantly get, you know, positive remarks on. People in the community love it. People wanna see more of it. And I just wanna make sure we maybe have a bigger discussion about that this time. Finance options on how we could expand it and how much is it gonna cost and what's the trade-offs? Because it is something that, like I said, is a constant sort of thing that people ask for. And they're happy for the programming as well. I mean, and I think there is a demand for more of it. It's just gonna be a question of what can we do within our budget. But yeah, just to highlight that, that we can have a little bit more focus on that and have some different options brought forward about what that would look like. Thanks, Jamie.
So Jamie, is there some opportunity for you to find out from the school, from those kids, exactly what they're looking for so we can sort of zoom in on it? Are they looking for soccer? Are they looking, like, what are those other things? Because we do provide excellent recreation program here. It's excellent. So if there's things that we're missing, can you drill a little deeper and find out?
I mean, we heard that last year where we offered our intro to soccer program with Danielle and our intro to softball. Again, coming back to that three- to six-year-old age. Before, we'd only run a program and I did the soccer and the baseball and I actually had to double up last year. I had to add extra days, same as the little athletes. Like I said, I filled out with the 10 for the three to six, but now I have parents going, "Hey, my kid would like to do that," but they don't wanna be with six-year-olds because, or they don't wanna be three-year-olds because they're seven. And nor do we wanna put three-year-olds and seven-year-olds together because they're a totally different scale of entry level than what. So we're just gonna start thinking outside of the box, being able to have the flexibility to move things around and to shift what works.
Excellent, thank you. And I just have one more question for you. We have the July 1st fireworks. Have we looked into or thought about the drone shows?
They're very expensive. They're probably three times as much as what the fireworks are, I guess.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Counsel Rich.
Through the chair, and maybe this is to Dean. Have we looked at, with our health center, and we've got that space there? And as we continue to look for someone to rent it and that hasn't, we're not there yet in my knowledge, is that a space that we can start using for rec, that we can get little desks so that we're not paying to the schools and out to CSRD, to the hockey arena and all those spaces? We don't have a space, so we continue to put money out to rent. And if we could keep that money in and use that space, is that something we can do?
Yeah, we already are. So yoga, for example, is being done over there. So where the opportunity is to utilize the health center as a facility, we are. And we'll hopefully see that expanded more and more.
But in the kind of gravel space?
Well, we haven't decided, counsel hasn't decided what's gonna happen with that particular space. We've had discussion around the lab for that space. So where that ends up being, but it's not space that can be utilized at this point. There's some investment that'll have to go in and completing that space. It's not designed to be an open space, so it's designed to be more around a dental clinic or laboratory. So it's designed with partitions and columns. It's not a large open space like the community center is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. Counsel Rich, one more question and then we'll move on.
Okay. I just, what can you use the larger community space for? Because I do believe that the flooring limits you.
As Dean, I'm already running yoga programs in that space right now. You wouldn't wanna be putting pound or Kengoo or stuff in there because it's carpet. So it's very, it's, you know, challenging because you don't wanna rep the space either and we don't wanna monopolize it with all of our programs because we are trying to rent it out as well. I mean, things like workshops and things like that, definitely for sure, we can use in that space. But I mean, I would not put an art class in there by any means because... But I mean, I would not put an art class in there by any means because that would just destroy the carpet. We don't want to do that. So that's where we can keep using filmism for for that, for those type of programs. We do have that other extra space. My the the space that that when I refer to not having a home is a gymnasium space. Things for like pickleball, things for like basketball, volleyball, you know, things like that. That's the that's the space rim challenge. And it wouldn't matter if it was the rec center, the red barn, the senior center. It's none of that, those programs fit in those spaces.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jamie. Good. Great job. Thanks for the presentation. Okay, we're gonna move on, but before we do, I'm going to take, we're gonna go into the RW Broom Bridge closure schedule. I think we've got some uh MOTT folks that will be joining us. But we are going to uh make a little change to the agenda and that is I'm going to move the public input to in front of the council reports and just behind the RW Broom Bridge. If council is okay with that, and that way it gives us more time to um answer some questions from the gallery with the the bridge construction. Okay, do we have uh folks online or are they coming in? Oh, there you are.
Good afternoon. It's Mark with the Broom Bridge.
Thanks, Mark.
I'm here for uh hours, so to answer some questions regarding our job and the traffic.
So I'll start off with Mark. We've received a lot of concerns and questions from the uh the folks over on the west side regarding the top of the hour. Um, closure or the top of the hour traffic moving through. And uh, we have met with MOTT to discuss any options that we can.
That's the sound like what kind of.
We understand and we totally understand that this is a safety issue as they move the uh start the construction farther up the side of the mountain there. And we were out at um at the beach park the other day uh looking at, and I know that folks from the west side can't see what they're doing in the construction zone, but right up way up at the top, they are, they were planting whatever little blasts that to break the the rock. So we know um that first and foremost, the most important thing is safety to our community. So having said that, I don't think that this has the schedules changed a lot from last year. I think it's more of an enforcement this year that that moving forward is is um, it's not a change. It's just enforcement. So Mark, did you want to take it away and and?
Correct. Yeah. So to kind of carry on where you left off. The traffic regime that we have at the project has been the traffic regime that uh we've communicated from day one. Um, so last year, because of the work that was occurring with most of the work occurring towards the west end of the job, we had a lot more flexibility in managing traffic. Um, right now, we're a lot busier than when we were last year. The work is moving eastward. We're working at the east department, which is just at the junction. We have bridge deck maintenance going on. We have the east department piling. And we also have all the work happening in the con grave road area. So construction traffic coming in and out and traveling on the old Spall Road. So lots of new activity and lots of different activities and changing activities that are going on throughout the winter. So um, the daytime closures are very important to our project. It's when we get the most amount of work done. It's a priority for us to make sure that we get the most out of the daytime closures. Uh, so the the traffic regiment that we have at Old Spall is to make sure that first off, the people traveling through Old Spall are safe. And second off, that we are getting the maximum out of the daytime closures and giving the contractor the opportunity to do the work as efficiently as possible for us. And I think the general Sycamuse community would agree, getting the job done as efficiently as possible is to the benefit of all the users of the TransCanada Highway.
Hmm, thank you, Mark. And I just want to note that we do have Pam Communications and Micah, the project manager, online as well. So um, thanks for joining us today. Um, Council, do you have before we get started with gallery? Council, do you have some questions? Council McCabe.
Yes, thank you through the chair. Uh, the main feedback I'm getting is um about about the law, obviously about the closures. When you were doing it before and and had the the traffic control people seem to have more discretion. But you you explained why that's not the case anymore. But um, if it is it possible at all to go back to um giving a traffic control folks more onsite discretion instead of having it on the hour every hour, uh, it could be um whenever, whenever they can get them through, be it a single file or be it uh with a pilot, you know, piloted. Just on the hour every hour, it doesn't work for businesses on the west side of the channels is the main feedback I'm getting. Um, and I guess some second question is, um, what about night work? Couldn't you put up some light plants and and possibly um do it at night and that way you're not impacting business hours?
So a couple of things. First off, the the random closures and random openings versus the scheduled closure, scheduled openings. What we found with the daytime closures and the traffic that moves back and forth to Sycamuse and San Nar and vice versa. The folks that are out at Old Sycamuse Road that having a schedule and having uh an opportunity for people to plan when the road is gonna be open, when it is closed, is more important than randomly having the road open or closed. We've had people frustrated with either regiment. People show up assuming the road's gonna be open. It isn't. People show up assuming the road isn't gonna be closed or vice versa. Having the schedule, we find is the most practical way to do it because it gives folks an opportunity to plan. It gives them the opportunity to come up with a routine. And it also gives us an opportunity to plan our work. Uh, nighttime work, yes, we work twenty four seven. Um, there's certain work that we can do during the night. There's certain work that we can't. Obviously, working in the daytime is a lot safer than working at nighttime. So work that happens up on the slope, all the highest risk work that we do on the job site has to happen at the daytime because that's where we can see what's happening around us. That's when the workers can tell what's happening around them. When we're working at nighttime with light plats, it's kind of like you're looking through a telescope. You see a little bit and you've got shadows. So working from equipment, yeah, we can do some of the equipment. We could do some of the hauling during nighttime. But really, in in terms of safety, most of the work that we do on this job site has to be during the daytime. And that's why we have these daytime closures is because that work is just so high risk. And it's important that our workers have that job site to themselves and we're not interfacing with traffic. So um during the summertime, we had to adjust because we have traffic coming out of the job site. We have workers interfacing with the general public. That introduces other risks as well. So this is all really just coming down to how do we address these risks? How do we make sure people can do the work safely and how can we make sure that we do it efficiently?
Thank you, Mark. Micah, I'm gonna let you go right before Council Bailey. Micah, do you want to jump in?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, and through the chair to the first question, I would I would add, uh, uh, totally support everything Mark say. I would add to the comment or the question about uh giving the traffic control personnel more discretion. Uh, right now, the answer is no, because the work that we are planning is um of high risk and consequence. And yes, once we can give the um traffic control personnel more um discretion, we will do so. And so we we take this very seriously that we know that we're impacting folks and we are trying to minimize it as best as possible. And we are also trying to get this project done as quickly as possible to Mark's point about we need to let the contractor be um efficient. And uh anytime that we're dealing with rock, um, there is high risk and high consequence. Um, we do not, you, you, some might not believe us that we're really cared about safety, but we really are. And so we really want to focus on um getting the work done now, um, because we know it's a safety risk. However, as soon as we do feel it's safe, that we can allow more flexibility, absolutely, that will be of top priority. And that's why you did, um, Mark mentioned it earlier, is last year we didn't have these strict closures in um because we were working more on the the west end of it. Uh, but now that we move closer to the intersection with Old Spall, the the risk is higher. So yes, to the first question.
Thank you, Micah. Council Bailey.
Yeah, well, that's um perfect for my follow up on that. It's so what, how long are we looking at? I mean, are we looking at two months, three months, four months, five months, six months? Are we looking into next year? It's it's kind of, I I think that might be where some of this concern is coming from because I don't know if there is clarity on this. And so if we start thinking, okay, this whole project is three years long or three and a half years long. Is this between now and the end? Or is this an intensive period you're going into and it's gonna, you know, we're gonna have to bite the bullet for three or four months? So I I think that's a really big time difference. Is it five months or is it two and a half years? So I guess that's my question.
Mark or Micah?
Right now, the regimen that we're using today, the plan is to have that regimen throughout the rest of the daytime closures. So September fifteenth to June fifteenth, that's based on the work and and where we're at today. But of course, that could be changing depending on what's happening at the job site. But answering that question today, that's the answer. September fifteenth to June fifteenth.
I, sorry, I'm just gonna jump in. I'm just gonna say for the three and a half years or for this year? Or like for the entire entirety of the job, like three and a half years?
Yeah, yeah.
So can I just a follow up? Yeah, I and I I guess so this is where maybe this is shifting a little bit because I remember, well, I remember so many briefings on this project that started and stopped. And there were different plans as we went along. But one of the things we were told at the beginning was these full daytime closures or the closures in general weren't necessarily gonna happen every single day the entire time. And and I remember that being as part of a briefing, but now it seems that the daytime closures are happening all the time, uh, except other than a couple of long weekends and then obviously in the summer. And so that is actually a fairly significant shift from what I even originally thought it was going to be from our original briefing before the project even got going. Um, because I remember asking that question and I was sold, no, no, it's not gonna be every single day, six days a week. But now it is. So I I guess what I'm asking for is clarity on this issue for the length of the project. Is it going to be like this? And if that's what we're hearing, then yeah, we're gonna have some people concerned. So I I see Micah's hand is up and anybody else who wants to.
Micah, do you want to jump in and then we'll go to Council Bushel and Council Rich?
Sure. Uh, thank you through the chair to the counselor. Um, we, uh, I apologize if we hadn't clearly articulated. We had always said the contractor will be allowed these closures if they are doing work that does require the closure. So we're not gonna just allow closures for the sake of closures. Um, the rock cuts that we um are working in, whenever we are um working in rock, there is always um variability in in how that work progresses. And so we can't give you an exact, like, uh, we can probably tell you how the bridge is gonna go because the bridge pieces, it's like putting Lego together. The rock is, you're you're digging through material and and things are changing and shifting. And so what we're trying to do is be abundantly, um, in abundance of kindness to say, you might expect this till for sure the end of June fifteenth, uh, twenty twenty six. And there's another window and we'll we'll happy to come back and tell you what our plan is then because we will know more when we get there because we don't know all of the answers yet, uh, because we are into the rock. And so, yes, for this year, um, likely to expect that till June fifteenth, um, we are gonna be on the top of the hour closures. And like I mentioned previously, if we can uh relax that, we will, we absolutely will. And we will look to um, to make sure that we can do, like, thread the needle through that. To to Mark's point, we we are, we will be all totally open and transparent about what um, what's going on. But uh, Pam, if I may invite you to add what I missed.
Thanks, Micah. Council Bushel.
Yeah, through the chair. Thank you, Mark and uh, Micah.
Oh, sorry, Pam.
For the, for those, um, uh, you know, one of the, like, some of the questions I get from some of the uh owners over there that are, you know, uh, doing their due diligence, they, I know safety is utmost concern. And uh, when you're blasting, yes, there should be no, no traffic in the near near area. But when you're working on the hillside at the top of the hour and people are waiting underneath the cliffside until the road opens, they're really, there's forested trees above them and they're they're waiting at the stop sign or the light there with the flagger. And uh, and then the top of the hour opens up and then they're allowed to go down the bridge, but the work keeps going. The work is still going on while they're moving. Not right above them. It's all, it's all happening more to the west. So they're actually, it doesn't really make sense that it's that they're allowed to stack up underneath the cliff there and until the bridge opens and then they open the bridge and they're still working on the on the on the westerly edge. And it's not, that's not safe, if you ask me. But so they're seeing all this and they're wondering, you know, I know you, you know, I know you gotta be safe, but it's not really being safe if there's parked under the bridge and it's just kind of wishy washy. So what, you know, if you could answer some of those questions on why that's happening and then, you know, then it might put some ease to some of these concerns. Because right now, the way it's happening is is they're parked right underneath the cliff, waiting for the uh, the hour. And then when the hour opens, they they they're allowed to go across the bridge. And the work continues on on the hillside. And the hillside all slopes towards the highway, TransCanada Highway. And there's trees all above them that haven't even been excavated. And I know rocks do go through trees, believe me. Um, but uh, I just, it just doesn't make sense to me and it doesn't make sense to them either.
Council Rich, before I get to him, you're gonna go back to Pam and then to Micah.
Thank you.
No, no.
Oh, which Pam?
I'm OTT.
Sorry.
Thank you through the chair. Um, the only um thing I wanted to add to what Micah shared is that what we have always said is that um we will let people know if the bridge is open or not. And so we've been really uh clear to ensure that our schedule is current and up to date. And I just want to do another plug to thank the District of Sycamuse for all of the work that you have done to help us get that message out. Um, and Drive BC is always the source of truth if people are wondering what is happening in a specific day. Um, partly what we're encouraging people to do is to sign up to receive project updates so that you can be informed about when there is a change. But just to refer again to what Micah said is for the near future, we're anticipating that the daytime closures with the hourly uh opening will continue for the next um time being.
Thanks, Pam. Micah, did you want to address Council Bushel?
I'll address.
Okay, sorry, Mark. You go ahead.
Questions. So it's a big job site. It's a complicated job site. There's all sorts of different activities. We have what we call projects within projects. And um, you know, to do, take a kind of a snapshot of the job at any given time and and use that to determine, okay, you know, what is happening, I don't think is a, you know, a good, fair representation of the job. When we talk about the rock work, we've, we are talking about a bunch of different work activities when people when we mention rock, people immediately kind of think drilling and blasting. That's the highest, highest, uh, you know, most observed activity on the job site. Um, so I I understand or I recognize that when we talk about rock work, a lot of people just assume drilling and blasting. That isn't the case. Uh, when when we, when I talk about rock work and what's happening up there, I'm talking about drilling. I'm talking about scaling, talking about anchor bolts, uh, exploration, geotechnical work. So there's all sorts of different activities that are part of what we call rock work. And unless you're, you know, an eye in the sky, you're only gonna capture a small portion of that stuff happening at every, any given time. And we've had incidents where rocks have come down through the job site. We have precautions. We have rock catchments. We have rock fences, um, and rocks have made it through those um, those mitigative measures. And that's why the road is closed when the work is happening. The work, the road isn't only closed because of the rock work. We have a bunch of activity down on Congrave Road. We have telehandlers, off highway equipment traveling in and out of Congrave Road. Uh, that's been ongoing for quite some time. This summer, we had several incidents where traffic did not obey. Uh, and rocks have made it through those, um, those mitigative measures. And that's why the road is closed when the work is happening. The work, the road isn't only closed because of the rock work. We have a bunch of activity down on Congrave Road. We have telehandlers, off-highway equipment traveling in and out of Congrave Road. Uh, that's been ongoing for quite some time. This summer, we had several incidents where traffic did not obey the devices and we had near misses with the off-highway equipment and the traveling public. Obviously, that's a problem. Um, so, you know, we've had problems, we've had issues, we know that. Trying to keep traffic moving while we're working doesn't work either. Um, people have to just trust us when we say we're working and we're doing high-risk work. And when the road is open, it's safe. We have geotechnical people on the job site, we have rocks on the job site, we have spotters, we have work-safe approved policies. So, um, understand that, you know, we're all observing different things. But, uh, the people that are working up there are professionals, they're some of the best in the business. And, um, we have to trust that they're making the right calls and that they're doing the right things.
Thank you, Mark. Councillor Rich?
Yeah, through the chair. So I've, I've got a couple of things here is, I think one of the biggest, biggest things is lack of communication and transparency. So nobody knows what's going on, on that side. And we say west side, this is Sycamore, these are Sycamore restaurant, uh, residents. So I, I don't think we separate them. These, these are Sycamore taxpayers. So we represent Sycamore. Um, and we need to make that very clear. We've had, um, no communication through this. Um, I, I don't believe there were doorknockers set out. I, I don't believe, like, I think most of the communication was going through flaggers, which is not fair to the, the folks that are flagging either, to have to deal with the residents. So we really need to, to discuss that on how the communication is gonna go. And, 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 um, the transparency. So again, absolutely, uh, Micah, you can speak to this. I think it was five years ago in some paper, I've been digging through this, that we said we would have these closures. But we have had open, traffic has been allowed through. Um, local residents have been allowed through and then literally bang, 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 shut down. And then it was, it was a pillar, it was, uh, um, pissed off a flagger, quote unquote. That, that there's a crack in the rock, uh, the bridge needs to be resurfaced. So we need transparency on what's happening. And then what we need to have is, um, eight months closure doesn't work. We have businesses, so if, and we have people with kids and we have people with medical. So honestly, the, some of the people in the gallery today had to leave at eleven forty-five to be here at a one o'clock meeting and they're gonna get home if I stop talking at four o'clock, um, because of bridge closures. They live five minutes out of town. So how do we mitigate that? How do we, we need to just come to a different place because it doesn't work for eight months. So if it's two weeks on, uh, uh, we need to figure out how we make it work. And I'm not sure, but saying it's closed for the next eight months on end. Just for the record, um, the closures have not worked. They, people show up and, and they've been stopped and then they get held and they're held for an hour when they showed up five minutes before to get across the bridge. So it's not working. So I guess, I don't know if it's a question, it's maybe more of a statement. But I guess the question is, is we need to sit down and, and meet. And I don't think an eight-month, month closure is acceptable. I don't.
Thank you, councillor Rich. Um, any comments? Go ahead, Micah.
I'll take that. Uh, so, uh, certainly would like to address the communications. Uh, and if we have got communications wrong, uh, we are definitely open to any and all feedback. Uh, we have had our website, um, that has stated this for, for quite some time. Uh, and I do know that, uh, when I took on this project, uh, over a year ago, I, I know I came to council and presented on this that it would be top of the hour. And so I apologize if, if we didn't get our message outright. I'm so happy to take, uh, any feedback, um, on how we can communicate better differently. Um, our Drive B C is, is our really source of truth. And, uh, before the Labor Action, our website has been updated on a weekly basis. And so if, if the message isn't going out, um, we had also sent out postcards. Um, perhaps we got some of the, um, didn't get all the postal codes right. Um, again, we'll own that. Um, however, thi- this has always been part of the plan and, and part of what our discussions have been is if we hamper the contractor too much, then they can't get their work done efficiently. And the efficiency loss means add to schedule. And so, um, if, like, contractually, we have written into it um, that they are allowed closures and that they are required to open at the top of the hour. So, um, that would be a big departure if we move away from, um, not allowing the contractor to work and schedule in this way. Uh, happy to have the conversation and maybe that's one that we take offline and happy to, to meet with mayor and council to, to talk about that. Um, so the transparency, um, again, that, that makes me really sad to hear because what our intent has always been is to be abundantly transparent and, um, overshare wherever we can. Um, again, I'll, I'll echo Pam's comment. District of Sycamore has been working really closely with us, with Camden and, and the team on resharing everything. And so if we're not getting that right, again, open to the feedback. Um, however, um, we're trying and, uh, we have nothing to hide. We are trying to be as transparent as possible. And so those personally hurt my feelings a little bit, so. Um, and totally open to the feedback and how we can do better and, and me and the team can, can work through that. So, um, to your comment about transparency, I do know, um, specific notice went out to all the residents on Old Spall. And if we miss some people, again, we'll take more on that too. Um, uh, that, that we are gonna go back to that regiment, um, of the top of the hour on the hour. Um, I totally note your comment about there is a, uh, an individual that showed up at five minutes, like, on the clock, five minutes after, and they weren't allowed through. Um, yeah, we, we definitely had some bumps and we're working through those, uh, and happy to take that feedback as well. Um, so I, I struggle with the, that it's, it's totally not working and it's not workable. Um, again, happy to talk through it. However, um, we do need to let the contractor, when they are doing critical activities, be able to have that opportunity. And, and that was the whole part of the plan.
Thank you, Micah. Councillor Beach?
Thank you, through the chair. Um, I've really appreciated your comment, uh, about efficiency. And I guess what that, uh, brings to mind is that, uh, could we cut a year off of construction if we weren't closing at the top of an hour for ten minutes and distracting the construction clue, uh, crew? And I, and I do feel that we, we know and we can broadcast, uh, when would be the time that there would be a significant opening? And maybe make that access to get through a little bit longer. Broadcast when, when the, uh, access is gonna be open safely and, uh, cut down on the distraction every hour on the top of the hour for ten minutes. Everybody can plan, uh, as long as we know when the heavy traffic, heaviest traffic times are. People have to take responsibility for planning in this. It's just not gonna, it's, I, that's my, my question. And I appreciate you talking about efficiency because I think you can, it's gonna be hard to be distracted ten minutes at the top of every hour. I bet it takes longer than that to get the traffic through once they're waiting.
Thank you, councillor Beach. Councillor Bailey, and then we'll go.
Yeah, yeah, I just really quickly, I, I guess, you know, we're, we're trying to get through this pain. I, everyone knew that there was going to be a certain element. We're, we're happy that it's, the project's finally gotten going and it's, but so I, I guess the, the real question is, are we on the time schedule that was originally, uh, told to us? Or so is all this pain leading to, are we ahead of schedule, are we on schedule, or are we behind? Because we did have a little bit of a hiccup there on the summer opening, so it kind of leads me to that question. And since you're here, I'll just put you all on the spot.
That's a great question. You asked this question on Friday. So go ahead, Mark.
Right now, the project is on schedule and this is part of us trying to keep it on schedule is by, you know, having to implement or enforce, I would say implement, but enforce these hourly closures. We're trying everything we can to do as much as we can. Uh, last year when we implemented the daytime closures, we were a lot more flexible with the residents of Old Spall. Uh, unfortunately, right now, we can't have that same flexibility. Will it come back in the future? Maybe. But we are a hundred percent right now focused on making sure that we meet our commitment to all of British Columbia when we say this job's gonna be done on such, such a date.
Thank you. Councillor Rich?
Yeah, through the chair. What's the date?
Well, it's fall twenty twenty seven.
So September?
I, it's October Sunday.
Thursday thirteen.
A hundred percent. You know what? If you're gonna commit to it, I'm, I'm in. And then, um, my next comment would be, um, Micah, I would love that we sat down, that you came into council and, and had a meeting with us. Um, and then third is, are we gonna talk about con- compensation for the bit, for the, um, businesses that are losing money? So we did compensate when we couldn't get, uh, people to the beach park. And I hope we still have that support for the next three years, um, to get our, our kids cross safely. So are we gonna start looking at compensation for, um, the businesses on the west side that are losing? Like the, we've, uh, like, people are gonna lose their lives. It's, it's not, they're, these are small businesses and they employ, um, like, they just employ like five people or two people or seven people. But those are people that have kids in school and, and they're doing all those things. So has M O T T looked at if we're closing on this schedule, which we haven't worked last year? They had, they had that leeway and they did not bank ahead of it. And you can say it's on the website or they can look at Drive B C and all that kind of stuff. Um, we trusted you and we thought it was gonna be open for, uh, regular folks. Um, now we're being told it's not. Have you guys looked at where that compensation is gonna come back for these small businesses? Because not just for those businesses, but that money puts money back into our community.
Micah, do you want to take that away?
Yeah, thank you, uh, through the chair. Um, yes, we have looked at it and, uh, nobody's gonna like my answer is that, uh, it's a no. Um, as you can appreciate perhaps from council, if, if everybody who we impact in, in life, uh, if we were able to con- co- uh, compensate them, um, that, that is tax dollar money that is at work. Um, we, uh, in our opinion, have tried to be very fair and clear and given as much flexibility as possible. And we will continue to do so and we will continue to be, um, giving as much when we can, uh, flexibility. But no, uh, there is no compensation that is intended. So we can work through, and I know the district has come up with some creative, uh, options on, on some, uh, files, uh, where the, the district has kindly offered to, to make some supports. Um, and, and we really appreciate that and wanna make sure that we call that out. But, uh, the province at this point, uh, cannot compensate because we are, in our opinion, giving some reasonable access to businesses. And so I totally appreciate though that everyone doesn't agree with me on that and that's totally fine. Uh, and, and happy to take that feedback, but unfortunately, no, uh, there will no, not compensation plan.
Sorry, I do have to leave. I have a, another. Thanks, uh, Micah and Pam, take it. Thanks.
Okay.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark. Councillor Bushel, did you have another question?
I just wanted to thank, uh, Mark and, and, uh, Micah. Um, I appreciate what you're, what you guys are trying to do and we all need a new bridge. Um, but it doesn't give me any comfort. We're all talking about having a meeting, uh, with the district, but it's not, none of us live on that side of the channel. We don't feel the pain. Eight months is a long time. So if we do put a committee together, it would be nice to have some representation from the residents on the west side. For sure, uh, in those meetings. Because, um, yeah, we don't, you know, we don't know. I mean, you're busy. Can you imagine if you had a schedule like yours? And I mean, sure, if you were in an office eight hours a day and you could, you could plan for that. But everybody's busy and I know, I'm, I, I know I have a busy schedule, but I'm not at work eight hours a day. I'm coming and going all the time and I would never be able to do that. I'd have to have a boat. You know, so just thought I'd let you know if we could get some of their representation at the table as well. Thank you.
Thank you, um, CEO. Perhaps you could work with Micah there.
We certainly could explore with, with M O T T doing some kind of a, almost like an open house kind of scenario where we can set something up at the hillside and invite people to come in the evening when people are available and have some meetings and updates and information and so forth. Uh, so we'll, we'll offline after this and, uh, carry that direction from council to begin exploration of those things. And we have Pam and Micah here, so we can begin that process.
Okay, council, I think that we've kind of, so I'm just gonna open it up to the gallery for a minute. If there's anything that hasn't been discussed and you'd like to come up, state your name and your concern, please come up to the podium.
Hello, my name is Brian Keen. I'm a resident property owner and business owner and operator over on Old Spall Road. I've had a discussion on the phone both with Pam and Micah last week or maybe the week prior. But, uh, this is just gonna have not just a short-term pain on our company. It's going to be a devastating pain. It's going to destroy our business. It will fail. And we'll go bankrupt. We'll have to lay off six of our employees. We will not be able to support, uh, the way that we are right now, the different businesses in town. We bring in roughly half a million dollars into this community in gross revenue each winter. Winter's our busiest season. We have literally hundreds and hundreds of clients that we have stay at our property each winter. And just last week, we had one of our shoulder-seasoned clients, a group of twenty-six people, a hockey team with parents and children, that were gonna stay at our property for three nights in the middle of November. And they had to cancel because the scheduling with the bridge doesn't work, which was a five thousand dollar loss for us. Um, and that's just the beginning. We're getting phone calls from clients wondering if they should book with us this winter because they're not gonna be able to access the amenities in town. They're not gonna be able to access their home away from home when they're on vacation. And, uh, they're not gonna be able to use our services during the days, pick up our equipment that we rent to them, pick up the safety gear that we rent to them. And, uh, it's just, it's gonna be a complete disaster. And so I've had a conversation with one of the project managers and they shared with me personally, face-to-face, that they've had multiple different solutions that they've tried to extend to M O T, because they've worked on similar projects and even bigger projects. Uh, maybe putting, uh, a local tag in the front window, having pilot cars, doing fifteen-minute windows or thirty-minute windows instead of one-hour windows. And, uh, even the most beneficial would be, the project manager said verbatim, that it would be even better to do a shutdown at night because they can get a lot more work done at night. It's way more efficient and they could actually maybe even beat the deadline. But they're held to this nine to three. And so I do know that the project manager has many good solutions right now. I'm hoping that M O T might be able to compromise and look at some of these good ideas to benefit the citizens that live on that side and to help the businesses continue to thrive. The way that we've been, we've been in operation for eight years. And if this happens to us for one winter, there's no returning back. Like, we won't be able to grow back from that. And so just a couple of the questions, like, you know, regarding safety. I, I'm, I'm just curious, like, why the, the Schuylkill Villas Road isn't controlled? Because the Schuylkill Villas Road is literally stacked on top of Old Spall. And there's no work being done on it or in between it and Old Spall. And there's no flaggers on the Schuylkill Villas Road. So that just begs the question as to, is there currently a safety hazard that allows us from not being able to access Sycamore? And if there is, is there a way that we can mitigate it and be able to have better access? Uh, a couple of other major issues are critical services being provided to our home, propane, water. We have to get water delivered to our house often because our well is small, we have cisterns. And there's only certain windows in which we can have that stuff delivered. Propane, gas, water, garbage services, medical services. We have food services that provide food to our clients. All of these things are gonna be a complete disastrous nightmare trying to organize this. And that's just, again, the tip of the iceberg. So I'm just wondering, my hope is that the people that have been given, given the authority to make these decisions would take into account the businesses and the livelihoods of people on that side so that they can make a decision that may be beneficial to them.
Thank you, Ryan. Micah, did you want to, um, address Ryan's concerns and then we'll move on to the next person?
I can take that one, Micah, if you need to. Yeah, I, I know Micah does have a hard stop too, so I'm trying to make sure that we, um, address all the concerns. I won't speak specifically to, um, the, the, um, speaker. I won't speak specifically to the, the speaker's direct business effects because I know we've had those conversations already. What I can speak to is some of the comments that have been, or the questions that have been asked around the project generally. So just refer back to some of the comments that Mark has made earlier around the scheduling of work and safety of workers and the traveling public. Part of the work that the ministry did in developing the closure schedule and developing the contract is based on engagement that took place several years ago and based on ensuring that the work is done safely. The rationale for the nine to three closures is really based on things like ensuring that people can get to work, ensuring that kids can get to school. And so while that doesn't work for everyone, we need to look at what is needed for the whole of the community. And so that nine to three was something that was really developed based on the understanding about when most people are traveling. And as Micah mentioned, ensuring that there was access once an hour. This is not something that the ministry has to do. This is something that was developed as a mitigation measure to ensure that we could be continuing to provide the access while the closure work was happening. We have talked with some people in the calls and certainly with the contractor around things like the suggestion about doing it on the, on every fifteen minutes or every half hour. What we are asking people to understand and appreciate is that in order to do that, each time we open the road, we need to make sure it's safe. We need to clear the road. We need to ensure that work stops. And so if we do that more frequently, there's not going to be any work happening. And so it goes back to Micah's comment around ensuring that there is some efficiency of the project so that we actually get the project done. So things like more frequent openings is just not something that is going to feasibly work for the project. The other question around the Schuylkill Villas Road, like, that's a private road, so the ministry doesn't control it. But I do assure you that there has been communication and coordination with Schuylkill Villas since the project began and well before that. And so it's our understanding that the community there is well informed about what the closure schedule is. And if there is ever a concern around safety, we would obviously be making sure that we're making alternate arrangements on that road. It's in, in working with the Schuylkill Villas themselves. The other comment that was made, and I, I do appreciate, we've spoken with a number of people around concerns around propane and those kinds of deliveries. We also understand that there are businesses who are saying, yeah, it's an inconvenience, but we're going to continue to provide those deliveries. We know sometimes those are things that can be scheduled. And so being aware of what the bridge closure schedule is and being able to make adjustments into the, in the delivery schedule, we understand those kinds of things are already being planned and, and starting to happen. So I do appreciate that there is some concerns about individual businesses and individual people for whom that nine to three doesn't always work. But part of the work that we did in developing the project plan and, and the construction schedule was, was trying to ensure that we were making things as flexible as possible for as many people in, within the District of Sicamous and other highway travelers.
Thanks, Pam. Thank you, Ryan. We had another, someone else in the audience that had their hand up? Could you state your name and, your name, please?
My name is Rick Ginger. I live on Coach Road, which is by the road expected. I just had a call from Matt saying they weren't coming down Coach Road anymore. Can't take the time, basically. And here, speaking of time, you've been talking about five minutes or at the top of the clock here in the, of some traffic from our side of the road, side of the channel to go down to Sicamous. Well, your meeting started at one o'clock. I was parked at your security guard at eight closure, a half hour before one. Okay, so we're watching cars start showing up behind me. And then, you know, turn off the engine. It's not snowing or anything. And then, well, it's one o'clock. My phone, exactly one o'clock. Well, guess what? There's a truck coming. He's got a pop on it. He wants to, like, do his turnaround and go down below and do his work. Well, who stopped him? Five minutes, eight minutes go by. That's gotten into our time. So I know it's not working. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, go ahead. And then Deb, you can go.
Hi, everyone. My name is Kevin Hamwell. I'm the general manager at Mary Hills, of course, formerly known as High Mountain, of course. Obviously, my concerns have been addressed during this meeting. But just to give you some of the basic math on the financial implications, as I sent to the council. Right now, if, for instance, somebody tries to cross the bridge or get across the bridge at twelve o'clock noon, by the time they get to the parking lot, it's twelve ten. By the time they get their golf clubs out and they're ready to golf, that's twelve twenty. So essentially, we lose two tee times per hour. And that's twelve tee times per day. That means we stand to lose about forty eight hundred dollars per day during these daytime closures. And in that sixty day span between April fifteenth to June fifteenth, we're at, wait, to two hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars in potential revenue flushed down the drain. Times that by three and a half years, we're looking at over a million dollars in potential lost revenue. In addition to that, we have our staff members. We employ up to sixty people in the peak season. All of those staff members are now concerned about their future, about their jobs. And if you were to go to the golf course today or during these, these closures, our parking lot is pretty empty. You know, obviously, this, this time of year is not obviously our, our prime time, but it's still, still very important to us. To, you know, basically to, to give you more of an example as opposed to, or example of some of the purposes that people have had to endure. We had cancellation of a group of twenty five or thirty people that had a business lunch and reservation, which we received an email last week to say that they've had to reschedule because of the closures and having all of their staff members can't really make the closures work. So there again is more potential revenue or lost revenue that will hit back. So, you know, like I said, everything is being addressed. But, you know, hearing that there is no financial relief is not anything that anybody would prefer to hear when you're trying to operate a business. And, you know, it's, it's, for the most part, I can only see it getting worse because, you know, essentially from June fifteenth to September fifteenth, it gives us three months to make money. And a three month employment season is not preferable for me. I'm not going to be able to attract any, any decent staff until, but by the way, we've only got three months worth of work for you. So that's, that's just kind of my, my take on, on the current situation.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, Counselor McKay, if you want to jump in?
Yeah, thank you through the chair, I, I guess, to Mike and her. In the past, the Ministry of Transportation used to have a process for lost, loss of business claims. Do you still have some sort of process that our local businesses can put in a loss of business claim to Ministry of Transportation?
Go ahead, Micah.
Yeah, through the chair, we do still have that process. I've only been familiar with it when we have either a temporary license to construct or a property taking. And so I'm not familiar with the rest of it, but that's something I can certainly take away and through the C O can get back to.
Okay, thank you, Counselor McKay. Deb, did you want to go ahead?
Sure. My name is John Krupa and I reside on Old Spall Street. Got the opportunity to speak to councils. Thank you for giving this. Rather than suffer in silence, I've taken a bit of a letter writing campaign and I wrote to the council and I wrote to Room Bridge Project just to find out a little bit more about the process of public consultation and how we can be better involved. In my opinion, in my experience, I used to work in the planning department for the district. That public consultation process, process is not something new for big projects like this. It's well taught. You've considered the Colona Bridge project that went on for years. That was a major project like this one. In my experience, we would consider who the stakeholders were in these various projects. And we would almost do like a bullseye. So those people closest to the bullseye were the ones that we ensure we had close consultation with. And we had a number of different meetings that we would reach out to the community to ensure that we got everybody. It wasn't just a website. There were signs. There was mailers. There were drop offs at schools. And I've been in, we are, we're new to the community, one year. I haven't received anything that I can recall. I've looked on the website. I've had to, it had to be me taking the effort to find out what was going on. So I guess my question to Room Bridge Project is, this can be done better. Are you willing to try it?
Pam, Micah?
Sure, I'm happy to speak to that through the chair. Thank you. The, some of the engagement did take place, I think, before either Micah or I were involved in this. So there has been some engagement that was done in planning for the project. As we moved into starting the construction, once the construction contract was awarded, we actually did quite a lot of communication. And I know that Micah has referred to some of that. There were two mail drops to residents and businesses in the District of Sicamous. We do have those postal codes if people are interested in just confirming if, as Micah mentioned, perhaps we've missed a postal code or perhaps there are people who are not necessarily in Sicamous proper, maybe in one of the electoral areas who are also affected. And, and we can check to see if we missed those. We also had posters in the community. We've had the website active for quite some time. We've had lots of media articles and stories referring to how you can find information about the project. And then, as we mentioned earlier, the District of Sicamous is also providing that. There's also been a lot of chatter on social media. And admittedly, the Ministry of Transportation doesn't have a social media account for this project. But we have been coordinating through District of Sicamous, who has a very active social media presence. And also, we've been monitoring a lot of the social, social media chat pages and working to ensure through the, the moderators of those forums, if there's misinformation or if we felt like there was an important to share information, we do that. So from, again, from our perspective, there's actually been quite a lot of information out there since well before the project began. And to Micah's earlier point, if there are things that people say we can do things differently, we're happy to consider whether or not those are feasible. We recently had a barbecue coordinated with the District of Sicamous to invite people. And a big component of that was to remind people that the fall closure schedule was happening and that we would be returning to openings on the hour. I do appreciate that for people along Old Spall Road, that is different than last year. And I think, you know, if there is a lesson learned here, perhaps we could have done more to communicate, hey, it's going to be different than last year. But from our perspective, we've been really clear that the, the closures are allowed to be such that the opening is only on the hour. So take the questions and concerns and, but, but I do share, there is information on the project website about the past engagement that took place. There was also a, a working group with representatives from business, marine users, emergency responders, all those kinds of things to help provide some of the local information. And there were multiple meetings with things like the school district and, and other affected parties. Not necessarily individual residents, although there was open houses and those kinds of things. But looking to try and ensure that we were covering all of the interests by working with representatives of those kinds of groups. I think, Micah, you also have your hand up and you're still here. So yay.
I'm still here. Yeah, no, I'm, I'm trying to move some things around. And I appreciate the comment and agree with everything Pam said. And we do have, you know, open to, to more feedback. The old Sicamous, and I appreciate that there's perhaps last residents on the old Sicamous Road, but they have been in this traffic regime since last year. They experienced this last closure as well. And, and I just want to wish, I, we have not heard that anyone hasn't been able to get propane, water or, or garbage pickup. And so while we certainly hear the concerns and if we can do better different, absolutely open to that. And we commit to continue, continuing to talk. And if, if we need to have more in-person meetings, we will do that. We will take any and all suggestions. And I guess I just encourage perhaps through the C O, if, if we can have a follow-up conversation after with all of these ideas, happy to take them on. And, and if more mail outs are required or more email addresses, we, we do also have a subscription feature to our website that when we update it, you can subscribe to that and it'll automatically send you what the update is. There's also Drive B C that you can subscribe to that'll automatically send you the updates. And so, but if there's other ideas out there, we're, we're absolutely open and willing to consider them.
Sure, one more quick one, then we're going to have to move on.
So with the postal strike on, we don't have ability to get parcels to our side through courier service. The parcel services just won't meet the ten minute schedule. So I've got a bunch of Amazon parcels floating around somewhere. No idea where they're going to go. And finally, for communications, we all have boxes over there, mailboxes, like a community hub boxes. I think they're called the superbox. You could easily post a sign at each one of those when you have an upcoming significant issue that'll affect us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Okay, Deb, did you, did you want to share?
Just real quick, I know I did go to the barbecue and it was very obvious that the road closures were starting again. But there wasn't anything that jumped out at me that it was going to be different than it was before. So I know because I had the funky festival, I was getting organized, I was like concerned about the closure. But it wasn't until the flagger told us that it was going to be on the hour that it jumped out. It may have been posted, it may have been up there, but there wasn't anything with like flashing lights saying, hey, it's going to be different this time. The one thing, I don't pretend to have the sorts of issues that Mary Hills does or that, that Ryan does with his business. But from my perspective, a, a couple of things have happened. One, I got a call from my mom yesterday that she needed to go to the hospital. And fortunately, it was eight o'clock. But if it had been after nine, I couldn't have done anything because I'm not an emergency vehicle. I, they wouldn't have let me out. So it was, you know, that, you know, it was fortunate for that. But I'm going to leave and I'm just not going to come back until, you know, like, the spring at the earliest. Because between trying to navigate, you know, the Rogers Pass, they can get here and have to deal with that. I'll, I'll just leave and I won't come back. And I'm not, you know, I'm not saying that's, you know, like, going to be earth shattering. But I can see other people being in the same boat. And that's, you know, like, for our community, that's important because we've got people on that side that are big contributors to the community. And, you know, it, it does have an impact. So that's it.
Thank you, Deb. Okay, Counselor Bushel, then we'll wrap it up.
Yes, through the chair, I, I guess, you know, I kind of, this is my third term and Mayor Anderson and Counselor McKay probably remember. And I do remember the previous project manager. And we all focused on the nine, the nine to three closure. And, oh, you know, everybody can live with nine to three closure, right? And we're all thinking the bridge, the bridge is going to be closed from nine to three. And, but they always said there'd just be minor, minor delays for the west side residents. And that's what I remember. But, you know, over the years, you know, we forget about it, right? And this is kind of what happened is we forgot about it. I, I never, I never thought that they were going to close that bridge like three terms ago for the residents. Just be flaggers, right? And that was where I was coming from. So it kind of dawned on me that I said, I just, you know, it's kind of got slipped under the, under the radar. And this is what we're ended up with. And I really think, I know I couldn't live with, with that schedule. And I'm, I'm, you know, I'm not a really busy person, but I, I know I couldn't live with that schedule. And, and I don't think anybody on the, on the screen or anybody at this table could live with the schedule.
Okay, Counselor Evans?
Yeah, I, I've been doing a lot of listening and I, I see it from both sides. But being that I've taken a lot of notes and I've taken a lot of what you folks have said and I've written it down, what's happening to you. And just so you know, I'm going to be compiling these in a letter to the Ministry of Transportation and, and letting them know. Because- and letting them know, because while I see both sides of it, I do understand the, that this is the suck of what we're going through right now, and, and it's not, it's not easy. So, yeah, I just wanted to let you know I'm going to write a letter.
Councilor Rich, one more.
Chair, can we maybe commit to a meeting with M O T T, C O A, and the residents of the West Side in the next two weeks?
Go ahead.
I've already been texted while we were sitting here with Micah, and we're going to connect on that after the speech, as far as scheduling. Don't know exactly where.
West Side has the opportunity. Everybody is working, and they're, they're also on a bridge consensual basis. So we have to make sure that they can get across. So we need that out as soon as we can, but we absolutely need to, these are Sicamus residents. This isn't West Side. This is Sicamus. And we, obviously, it's not working. So I think that's our job to advocate, and that we come up with something that the bridge continues, and we do a really great job to make sure our bridge gets done on time, but that we can also advocate and make sure everybody over there is functioning. So could we have that within the next two weeks?
I'm going to be connecting with Micah to schedule that, yes.
You can't plan a date. He's going to work as hard as he can, but soon as he knows, he'll get back to us. Councilor Bailey?
Yeah, I, it just kind of goes back to, I think, this project's been so long in the making, right? It's, it's gone through so many different iterations. When I first moved to Sicamus six years ago, everyone told me the bridge was about to start next month, that it was multiple years out. And we went through different project managers and different iterations of just even how this would look. And I think where we lost along the way here is the clear communication on closures and the expectations. Because I can certainly say, as a counselor, when I got those briefings, my expectation was it wasn't going to be eight months of closures, six days a week, nine to three. Because I did ask questions because I was concerned, hearing that at the time, going, wow, that's a massive impact, even people trying to get back and forth to Salmon Arm, let alone what it was going to, to residents on the West Side. And, and I, I think it's, we need to come back and take a look at that. We need to have 100% clarity on what does this look like for the next two and a half years. Because again, I think it shifted from last year again. So this is, this is what's concerning people, is last year, it was a little bit more, even though it was allowed, but it didn't actually happen, so it wasn't real. Now, you're putting it in, you're saying, hey, this is going to probably be the case for the next two and a half years. And people are trying to, understandably, try to get their head wrapped around this and go, well, how, how does this even work, right? And so now we're, and it doesn't work, right? So now we're at the point of going, okay, we're getting into real-world consequences. And, and that wasn't there before. So you can't have really a conversation about what real-world consequences are until you actually know them. And I think that's what you've heard today. And what, what's being discussed is a totally different scenario than what it was last year. And there hasn't been a conversation about what is that, what does that look like? And what is the impact on the community? Because this is a reality that's kind of come to the fore in the last three, four weeks. And so I think that's, does deserve a further conversation about how, and what is the clarity around this? Because I'm not clear myself, and I've been privy to in-camera briefings and stuff on these matters. But if I'm not clear, then I certainly can understand residents that are completely unclear as well.
Thank you, Councilor Bailey. Micah or Pam, did you want to have closing words?
Thank you through the chair. Just super appreciate hearing the concerns, and our commitment is that we will work together with you to address these. And my commitment is that Dean and I will connect, and we will get back to council with some next steps.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Did you want to come up to the podium, please?
What I'm wondering is, with our winter, could be like, our winter conditions on that road aren't the best, at the best times, especially down where Deb and I live, before some of the last, yeah, snowplows. Are the trucks going to be, are they going to allow him on the hour? There's a great big snowstorm. Stuck somewhere and have to wait an hour, and it's going to be cold, waiting in the cold.
Yeah, I understand. Micah, do we know, do we have a schedule for winter?
Through the chair, unfortunately, I don't have a crystal ball that tells me what winter might look like. However, we are working for winter planning, and we will work with the maintenance contractor, and perhaps that's an agenda topic that I would suggest that we add to the broader meeting, so residents.
Absolutely, we can add that. We've got AIM coming in, I think, in the next couple weeks there, so we can have a conversation with them as well. Okay, thank you. Thank you, M O T T. Thank you, Pam, Micah. Thank you, everyone, for bringing your concerns forward, but there is, schedule something and keep moving and do the best that we can do all together. That's, all we can do is the best we can do. Okay, all right, we're going to move on to council reports quickly. And then we'll adjourn. Councilor Bob?
I just want to thank council for their, their hard work when we were all together at U B C M, meeting with different ministers and advocating for Sicamus, and it was building time. And I, I had a really good time, learned lots, and I'm grateful for the opportunity.
You, Councilor Rich?
Yeah, U B C M was fabulous, and I think we got a lot done. And I want to put a shout out to Bob for the great service for Brett and everyone who was out there. That was pretty spectacular, and, and we miss him, and he's going to be in our community forever.
Thank you, Councilor Bushell.
Yeah, just same thing with U B C M. It was a great, great convention, and I got to meet some ministers and a few other, learned some things. But, yeah, I attended also the Salmonum Airport Committee Meeting that they had the last couple of weeks. It was interesting as we get into budget season. Also, attended Brett's funeral. I was at Ramesh Mac's funeral for just a brief time. And, you know, it's kind of sad, you know, I, I looked at the obituaries because I wanted to know the time. To the obituaries, I find, like even calling third, our dear husband just passed away, I cried with, and Ken Sepla, who ran a groomer for us for years, he passed away this last, you know, when they had a celebration, like, oh, you got to wake up and smell the roses sometimes. And I think it's a wake-up call for all of us. But anyways, yeah, Brett's ceremony was wonderful. It was very special. And then also, just lots of calls on the bridge. That's about all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Bushell. Councilor Bailey?
Yeah, U B C M, and, you know, I wanted to just do a shout out to Brett. I wasn't able to make his ceremony because I was working and had catering obligations and everything else. I made sure I did donate to that, and I think it was a wonderful thing that the community did. And he's certainly going to be missed. I mean, he was a bit of a, no, no, a bit of a, he was a beacon for our fire department. He was our first full-time fire chief, and I think he has laid an excellent foundation for that department, and it's being built upon as we go forward. But I, I did make a remark when he passed away that I'd really like to, and council can consider that the time is, is a naming opportunity for, for one of our buildings after Brett. I, I mean, personally, I think the fire department would be great, but anyways, I put that out there, and I, I think that's something we should, we should consider. Anyways.
Thanks, Councilor Beach.
Yeah, U B C M was great. I think, learned, learned a lot, made a couple of contacts. I, I'm excited about with, with Kelowna city councilors that, that are active with the zebra quagmire muscle work. And so just trying to follow up on some of those contacts and, and, yeah, sad, sad loss of some very, very great leaders in this community with Brett and also Ramesh Mac out in Malacca. So, yeah, just out of honor for them. It would be great to have a facility named after Brett here. So, good idea.
Thank you, Councilor McCabe.
Yeah, same as all the other councillors, U B C M, ministers' meetings, speed dating, 15 minutes with each minister. Our meeting with the Minister of Environment was, I think, productive to talk about local control with subdivisions and development approvals to get our qualified environmental professional be done at the local level. And so that's moving forward, I think.
Thank you, Councilor McCabe. I'll just be really quick. We did have, we did have an audience with five ministers. And to Councilor McCabe's point, yes, it's really important. We did meet with Waterlands and talk about riparian areas as well as water tenure. We met with the Minister of Health, Josie Osborne, and talked about moving forward or trying to get a lab into our health center, the Sicamus Health Center here in Sicamus. And that, they're very positive with that, so we're going to continue to push forward with that. We met with Transportation, of course, about, and we discussed communication and better communication. Thank you for communication. So they, and moving forward, we will continue with that meeting with Micah, and if we, if we need to rally the troops, we can move forward. We also met with the Minister of Affairs regarding wastewater and how we can get some, get some assistance and funding for that as well. So it was, oh, we also met with the Solicitor General and talked about bail reform and the catch and release, which is really in the news right now because everyone sees it's failing. Like, our government is, has failed us in that. So right now, it's, you know, top of mind and, and being talked about and being, and hopefully, going to be changed because it is, it's, it's important, and we should be safe. We should have healthcare. We should have good infrastructure. And those are things that, you know, we brought to the table and discussed. Councilor Bailey and I did a presentation to the U B C M funding for the Finlayson Upgrade, Finlayson Park Upgrade Project. And we tag teamed really well, so hopefully, fingers crossed, that we see something, anything. We're going to be happy. We were asked was $5.7 million, and eyebrows went up, and we're like, but look. And we also, yeah, exactly. But we also went in with the attitude, like, we have done a lot for our community, just our community. Like, we've built our own healthcare center. We've, you know, built our own daycare. We're here asking for just a little bit back, just to support it. We, you know, we did it.
Yep.
We did a good job, I think. So hopefully, fingers crossed, that's going to be approved. I think the first quarter, I think they're looking at. So, and I also dropped off some numbers and people for Bianca to keep touch base with, just to make buds. Congratulations to the Ferry Society of their huge success this season, 11,000, 11,000 people crossed on the ferry. So that's 11,000 people that came to Sicamus. Also, not just came to Sicamus, but that is our residents enjoying that. That's our rec kids enjoying that. But it did add a lot of economic value to, economic benefit to Sicamus as well. And congrats to our R C M SARS team that received awards, Pat, Rob, and Bruce. So big shout out to them for doing the great job and the great work that they do. I met last week with the C S R D regarding the C S R D strategic planning, which we'll be doing probably come January, February on a lower level because we have one more year to, and that could change. So we'll probably review our strategic priorities coming into the beginning of, of next year. And, yes, and AIM is coming to town, and we will pencil that in and make sure that we have that information and what our snow removal and road maintenance looks like. But I see that the intersection while we were away at N 97 has finally been grinded and paved, and hopefully, that will last for a little bit. So, okay, that's it. There is no gallery left for Q and A, and we've done that portion of the show already. So we are going to adjourn our Cal meeting at 3:05 on October the 8th. Could I get a mover, Councilor Evans, Councilor Rich, all in favor? And we're going to adjourn that.